Good evening all.
Good evening, City Manager Ogun. I am just dragging my key just one more minute and there just before we turn 6:01, I believe we have our full complement of council members for the evening. So with that, if staff's ready, I'll begin the meeting. Are we set to go?
Yeah, we're ready.
Perfect. Well, with that, welcome everybody who's watching tonight to this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to be former Kattati Community Redevelopment District for Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. And having called the meeting to order next, I will ask our city clerk if we could have a roll call.
Councilmember Moore. I will come back to councilmember Moore. Councilmember Sparks? Councilmember Ford?
Here.
I'll show Vice Mayor Harvey as absent and Mayor Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Ford, correction. Councilmember Moore, have you joined us?
Maybe we better try sign language.
I am seeing his listed, as listed, but I am not seeing his mic hot or his camera on.
I can see his camera. It seems like he can't hear us.
Interesting. Let's see. Yeah, there his camera is up. Let's test this one more time. Councilmember Moore, can you hear us and speak to us?
Thank you, yes. Pardon my tardiness. I was trying to connect and I was having technical difficulties.
Well, you're not alone in that. That happens to all of us at one point or another. So with that, glad to have you here. And with that, you've joined us at the perfect time. I will ask you to join all of us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Right, this takes us to item number four of our agenda tonight. This is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. I will begin by asking, let's see, just a minute, let me get to the minutes. If we have any corrections or additions from any of the council members to the minutes. I'm scrolling, I'm not seeing any hands go up. With that, I will ask the city clerk to open this to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Currently looking at our attendees list, we have nobody in attendance.
Excellent, all right. So that brings us back. I'll ask if we could have a motion in a second for this?
A move to approve those minutes?
Second.
And that's a motion in a second from councilmembers Ford and Sparks respectively. I'll ask the city clerk if we could have a roll call vote one more time.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. And that was for our city council regular meeting, January 25th. So with that, we are to item number five, which is announcements, and I do have some announcements to read here. Bear with me, everybody. We have four of them tonight. And we'll start with the longest one first, which is a meeting orientation for any new attendees or viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, measure our supports of police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. You can see details on the web at kattatycity.org. Citizens interested in receiving city of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android app stores or by texting your zip code 949312888777. And finally, like always, we do love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or at info@kattatycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So this brings us to agenda item number six, which is approval of the final agenda, another action item. And I'll check with the city manager. I know we do need to add our AB 361 language to our consent calendar. Are there any other changes, Mr. Ogun?
No, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, it's a couple of things. One is the, I mean, a couple of parts, I should say, same thing. So the, as you mentioned, AB 361 is the state law that allows us during COVID to continue to meet virtually. We have to renew that every 30 days. It wasn't in the initially published packet. It was added to the packet after its initial publication. But the 30-day renewal period will be up before our next meeting in later February. So in order to continue, so in other words, we're fine for this meeting, but we wouldn't be for the next one, so we need to adopt it tonight. And it's a two-part, add it to the agenda. And then I'd propose moving it onto the consent part of the agenda. And I believe that needs a vote to do.
In that case, if we need a vote in that, I'll per see if there's any discussion from my colleagues. Councilmember Sparks?
Just a quick question. Is it lapsing prior to our meeting next Tuesday?
Yes, we're, I think we're a couple of days away from the last.
Thank you.
I see here. With that, then, if there's no further questions, I wonder if we could have a motion suggesting we move this to our consent.
Do you need public comment for that?
This is approval of the final, once, you know, you're right, this would be the good time to do that. Hold out thought, we'll come back to that discussion. We don't usually do this during approval of the final agenda, so it's a good exercise for me. So with that, I'll ask the city clerk if we have anybody who wishes to comment in the public on this particular item.
We currently do not have any attendees.
Good. So coming back to that, we'll start up again with having a motion to move this forward.
I'd move to add the AB 361 resolution to the agenda, to the consent calendar.
To the consent calendar. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Do you have a second for that?
I have a second now.
A second from Councilmember Moore. All right, so if we could have a roll call vote, please, from the city clerk?
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. So that takes us through approval of the final agenda and making the adjustments we needed to. This takes us to item seven, which is citizen business and public comments for the consent calendar items. And I do have something to read for that. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed in the consent calendar or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action in any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to city council policy 2021-0, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So I'll ask our city clerk if we have any members of the public who wish to speak during citizen's business or have public comment for consent at this time.
Mayor Landman, we currently still do not have any attendees.
All right, so this brings us back then to our consent calendar, which now consists of two items, A and B, which is the AB 361 item. And I'll ask if any councilor wishes to pull any of these items. And I'm not, I'm seeing no hands go up. Very good. Since we've already had public comment, I'm open to a motion on this. Councilmember Moore? You're muted.
I would move to approve the consent calendar items eight A and nine.
I would move to approve the consent calendar items eight A and nine.
That would be eight.
Sorry, eight A.
A and B. There's two items on it now.
So moved.
Thank you. So we have that motion from Councilmember Moore. I'm looking for a second.
Second. It's Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Once again, this week, you're on fire. I like. All right, so we have a motion in a second. I will now ask the, let's see. I will ask the city manager, excuse me, I will ask the city clerk if we could have a roll call vote in this, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right. So this brings us back now to item 10, which is our regular agenda, and it has three items on it, A through C. Then we'll begin with our first item, which is a mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Item nine.
I'm sorry, did I? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm not doing well tonight. Hold that thought about item 10. For item nine, I'm going to ask if anybody has any direction in future agenda items. Well, it was good we stopped to check, because you never know. Thank you. All right. This time for sure, we really will move to item 10, which is our regular agenda. And the first item is a mid-year budget review. And I'll ask for our staff report on that, please.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow staff, and members of our community in the future or maybe watching this televised. Tonight, we'll be presenting to you our fiscal year 2021, 22 mid-year financial review. This is the unaudited, and so some of these numbers, of course, are not finalized and subject to some corrections as we continue the rest of our fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, 2022. And Lauren, if you could help me move a slide, please. So this report will cover your citywide overview, the summary of our general fund revenues and expenses, the enterprise funds, which include our water and wastewater or sewer funds, and then concluding with a summary of our cash and investment balances as of December 31st. Next slide, please. So stepping right into the citywide status as of December 31st, 2021. Next slide. So here's the summary of our citywide revenues and expenses compared to budget as of 12/31/2021, as well as the comparative actual revenues and expenditures as of 12/31/2021 for each fund type. Overall, revenues and expenditures citywide are in line with expectations where revenues are at approximately 44% of budget and the expenses are at 37% of budget. So I just want to take this moment to give you as a reminder that most of the activity for the city is managed within the general fund. And the other two major funds for the city are the enterprise services, which are business-like operations that are run for that water and wastewater funds. So we're going to dive into those a little bit of those major funds in just a moment. But I'd also like to recommend to anyone that's interested in learning more about these types of funds and how the city uses them, that we, you can maybe go to our full online budget book, which is online at www.katadycity.org, where there's a full discussion on what the funds are, what they're used for, and sometimes more importantly, what they're not used for. Next slide, please. So as a summary, the revenues expenses again are really considered on target. The revenues are at 34 or 44% of the budget. Some of those variances are really due to the timing and the pending receipts within the general fund for those sales tax receipts, which we'll get into a little bit further. Our capital projects are subject to significant amounts of timing, and those have transfers out and transfers in. And so those are the major components that are affecting expenses as well as the revenues, because there's a revenue transfer in to pay for those capital projects. Lastly, I just did want to mention that the internal service fund revenues are less due to the timing of the transfer of funds, similar to how we transfer funds for capital. We transfer funds for the vehicle replacements in order to match the actual purchase of the vehicle. So it is again, just a timing delay. And we do expect these to be on target when we get to the end of the year. Next slide, please. So the first major fund that we're going to cover is the general fund. So the total general fund revenues through the mid-year are approximately 481,000 or 12% above the same period in fiscal year 2020, 2021. So although the revenues are only at 39.4% of the budget through the mid-year and the current year, they're primarily due to this timing of receipts. Primarily, again, those sales tax receipts, which are the largest general fund revenue source. But these receipts are received two months after the period which they're received. And all indications using our consultants around sales tax, there's no indication that those would be off. And we are, you know, currently budgeting in lines where we are and don't see any reason for adjustments at this point in time. Overall, cumulative mid-year general fund expenditures decreased from the previous year by approximately 3% or $129,000. Most of this decrease was due to decreased other expenses, which was offset by the increase in contract services primarily related to insurance, professional services related for housing, or sorry, yeah, housing, stormwater, IT services, traffic signal repair and maintenance, as well as new contracts for ongoing operation and maintenance at the Floody Ranch. So spending by general fund departments are considered consistent with the prior year with noted increases in public works and recreation. And these match to those professional service adjustments. The increase in the public works are consistent with those repairs and maintenance, the contracts services, the increased incidence of damage to city property, and that's those traffic signal repairs that we've had to do. And that we've also installed those solar powered flash and crosswalk signals and video detection cameras, which replace the in-ground traffic loops. The increase in recreation expenditures is primarily due to an interesting COVID event in that last year, we had more canceled events during the same period due to COVID versus this year. So it's, if we had looked back two years, it was really consistent. But just due to the timing of canceled events, we had more events that we were able to provide this year in 2021 than the year prior. So through the first six months as compared to budget, the general fund expenditures are mostly tracking as expected with all operating departments averaging about 40% of the budget. Staff are proposing, however, a budget adjustment for a reduction in budget transfers for the capital projects due to the passing of the street bond issuance. So we'll go into this a little bit later in our summary. But we now have the street bond funding, so we'll no longer need to fund those components from the general fund. In addition, we do need to increase the expenditures to, for the allocated bond expense for the pension UAL payment. That was again, due to the bond refunding. We now paid additional discretionary payments to CalPERS in order to save approximately $1.9 million over the next 20 years. So overall, after, you know, as of mid-year, everything's aligned, but we know the, due to the events that happened in January with the bond financing, we want to propose those adjustments now so that we know our budget continues to align with where we expect them to be. Next slide. The categories, so this is again, one of my favorite ways to depict our revenues for the city. It kind of shows the differentiation of the different types that have come in. If you break that sales tax amount pretty much in half, you'll have the breakdown between our Bradley Burns, which is our 1% sales tax for that, versus our Measure G, Measure S funds, which would be the other half of that piece. So approximately a quarter of our revenues are from Bradley Burns, and another quarter is from the Measure S funds. And then the rest of it comes from these other components. The bottom, bottom corner that you can't quite read are the charges that are less than $20,000 year-to-date. These include the charges for services for public safety and code enforcement, as well as contributions and investment earnings. The charges for public safety are approximately $18,000, which is an increase of $6,000 from the prior year. And then code enforcement, which is $13,000, is down from the prior year. But the prior year was the first year of separately reporting that code enforcement, and so we had a lot of things going through. And so that was $54,000 in the prior year. The transfers that are included and depicted above are derived from the Public Safety Special Revenue Fund, which receives special revenues primarily from Prop 172 and the SLISA or the Supplemental Law Enforcement Services account, which then are transferred over to their general fund to fund and support the frontline law enforcement services. Next slide. So that's the summary of the general fund, and then we're going to take a little bit of a deeper dive into our summary of our total enterprise funds. So we're going to look at just the combination of the water as well as the wastewater funds. Next slide. The table above includes the cumulative revenues and expenses comparisons through the first half of the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 as a revenue budget to actual comparison for the fiscal year 2021, 22 for both of those enterprise funds. The water and wastewater fund revenues are made up from charges for services, connection fees, and other revenues, as well as development fees. The revenues compared to prior year are slightly down for water, primarily due to the reduced connection fee revenues from Cassing Ranch, as well as the reduced water usage associated with water conservation efforts during the drought. Comparatively, the wastewater is slightly up primarily just due to the rate changes. So for fiscal year 21, 22, most expenses are in line with budget at the mid-year. And one significant difference is the decrease in capital outlay expense for the wastewater fund over the prior year. Last year, in the same period, we were finishing up the William Olaf Pipeline Replacement Project, which was approximately $600,000 in the prior year. Next slide. So on to our overview of our cash and investments. Next slide. So in summary, and this is just a, in comparison to the revenue expenses, revenue and expenses are all the activity year-to-date as of December 31st, this fiscal year-to-date. Cash and investments are really a snapshot of time. What is our cash balance as of December 31st? So it is a reflection of our revenues coming in, expenses going out, but it's over time and at that point in time. So the total balance of our cash exceeds $21.1 million. The balance is in line with our adopted investment policy. So what we are currently invested in, how it's allocated, is in line with our policy. We do identify that we have enough to meet our operational needs for the next six months of the fiscal year. And we do want to let you know that we do continue, in order to meet the investment policy, we do utilize pooled cash investments. And so that is the LACE fund, as well as the Snoma County Investment Pool. So both of those pools of funds, we do utilize not actively, but we do use those for those significant hash balances, so we don't have a chunk of money just sitting in a bank account, you know, not being invested appropriately. Next slide, please. So this table really shows out the percentage and the breakout of those cash investments that were held by the city as of the mid-year. The current cash investment balances are in line with our investment policy. You can see that a majority of it is held in that LACE account. Again, the LACE returns are not as great as they should be, and so that was a big reason for also doing the bonds conversion, as well as making sure we're using our 115 trust and we get that set up for our future. But again, it is much better than getting no interest, but it is, you know, within those pool of investments that we have. And again, so that's the top pie chart, and on the bottom, we have the breakout of the cash available by funds. So you can see where really the pool of cash is sitting by the fund type. Next slide. So in conclusion, the budget is primarily on track. Staff is proposing adjustments, really not due to events in the past, but things that we know are hitting as of January. And first is the reduction of the transfers out from the general fund. They're now to fund the street bond, that are now funded by that street bond issuance. The increase in the current, the second piece is the increase in the current year expense for the one-time pension obligation bond allocation of expenses to the general fund, as well as the additional ADP that the general fund provided to the unfunded liability balance of CalPERS in order to save approximately $1.9 million of future interest charges from CalPERS over the next 20-plus years. And lastly, there is a one-time need. We did have a furnace at City Hall that did go down during that period, you know, during the period. And so that was an unbudgeted one-time expenditure that we are looking to get a budget adjustment for because it was not, you know, found within the funds. It's not a significant one, but we want, while we're looking at making these adjustments, we might as well ask for that as well. So except for the identified variances, expenses and revenues are tracking as expected. Staff will continue to monitor these variances and provide updated information to the city council during this budget development process, which is initiated now for the fiscal year 2022 and 23. So additionally, I do want to make sure I point out, there was an error in the packet, a minor errors typo within the resolution on the information within the note for the proposed adjustment. It is noted that there was $200,000 that was for the 116 West Katati. And that actually wasn't for that project. The project is actually the Quick Strike project. So all the dollars are the same, but that note where it said 116 West Katati is actually Quick Strike. So if you go to try and tie it to the budget that was adopted, it's actually Quick Strike, not the other names of that naming convention. And finally, I do want to point out that we do have a tentative schedule for the upcoming budget year workshops, which are included in the mid-year report, and it's included on packet page 26. And currently, the schedule is the following. So upcoming February 15th, we have our strategic planning sessions. And then followed with April 19th, we have our general fund budget study sessions. And May 17th would be the enterprise fund budget study sessions. And so that concludes my presentation. I'm willing to take any questions.
Well, that'd be a perfect segue then. I'll look to the council and see if we have any questions for staff in this presentation. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Andrea, if you look on packet page 29, under the expenditures by type, and we've got the second category is contract services. Do we know what portion of that approximately would be attributable to community development and planning?
I do not have that off the top of my head or within the report, but I can absolutely pull that.
Okay. I would think that as we move forward, and maybe it's something that we can elaborate on a little bit more in our budget study session. But in looking at some of these numbers, I'm thinking, wow. Maybe it's time to look at beefing up that particular staffing in those departments that we're spending that much money on outsourcing some of those things. Thank you. That was my only question on that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. I'm going to ask one more time, see if I see anything else. I'm not seeing the hands with questions go up right now. So I will look then to public comment. I'll ask our, if we can see if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. There are no attendees.
Yeah. It never hurts to check. All right. That concludes public comment. I'll bring it back to see if we have any discussion on this tonight from anybody. Well, I'll just say in general, as a council member for all these years, it always makes me smile when I see this in the packet and when I start reading through it and I see page after page where revenues exceed the expenses generally and everything's on track. That's a nice feeling, so thank you for that. And thank you for such a good job of presenting it as clearly as possible, because it is an exceedingly complex and large thing, but you do a very good job of making it easy for us to digest. And I think that's really important, particularly for the public, because they don't have even as much time and background in doing this as we do. So it's worth, well worth the effort, I believe. Councilmember Sparks, I see your hand up.
I just wanted to echo those sentiments. Thank you for the very clear report. And I will, I will mention that out at one of our ad hoc meeting, community meetings, somebody brought up that they had seen on social media how many awards we had won for budgeting. And I thought I'd pass that. Kudos on, on to you.
Always nice to hear this is getting out. Thank you for sharing that. All right. I'm not seeing any more hands go up. So with that, since there's somewhere discussion, I would be open to a motion. I believe we need to, bear with me just a second. We need to receive this, but we also need to approve those budget adjustments as described on page 24 of the package. So that's what I would be looking for.
So move.
Councilmember Moore by a hair.
I'll second that.
And Councilmember Ford for a second. Thank you very much. All right. I'll ask the city clerk if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Just trying to fill in.
And Mayor, just real quick, too, that there's that slight amendment to the language on the one transfer.
Right, the change of, the change of the language was that, does that need to be in our proposed budget adjustment or is that just accepting the amendment to the packet?
I think it's just accepting that the, that it, that the language around the transfer isn't the 116 Muscatati Avenue project. It's the Quick Strike project.
So noted, I'll just ask, I'll ask if the mover and the seconder will accept that? Just looking for a head nods or thumbs up?
Absolutely.
Very good. With that, then we will ask if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right. That concludes the mid-year budget. Thank you very much, Ms. Quarter.
Thank you.
Now we move on. And now we move on to item B of our regular agenda. And this is nominations for regional commissions committees on behalf of the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association and City Selection Committee. I'll see if we have a staff presentation on this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, so at the upcoming meeting on February 10th, this is Thursday, the mayors and council members board and also in theory, the city selection committee would be meeting in advance of the general membership meeting to consider regional appointments. So for the city selection committee, there is one vacancy for the Airport Land Use Commission vacated by Jack Tibbetts at Santa Rosa. But no letters were received for that. So it looks like we won't have a city selection committee. I know we won't have a city selection committee meeting because there's nothing to talk about at the, on the 10th. The Board of Directors, though, will be considering the Snowma Ag and Open Space Citizens Advisory Committee position. It was a seat vacated by Ariel Kelly out of Fieldsburg. And so to your appointment, there's one letter received by the mayor of Fieldsburg, Ozzy Amenes, which is attached to the packet. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'll look to the council and see if we have any questions for staff on that. This is perhaps easier than some of the decisions we've had to face in making these assignments tonight, certainly. Before we get to making that decision, I will just once again check in and see if we have any public comment on this, since it is an action item.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. There will be no public comment.
All right, then I'll bring this back to the council. So any direction from the council for me for voting? Councilmember Ford?
Yes, I'm comfortable with with our vote going to support Mayor of Fieldsburg.
Councilmember Moore?
I would concur with Councilmember Ford.
Okay, and Councilmember Sparks?
I also concur. I think he'll do a great job.
Yeah, it's, this is the sad thing of the pandemic. We have people who have been there for several years now, moved to the position of mayor, and yet some of us haven't had a chance actually even meet in person. Nevertheless, I see absolutely no reason why we wouldn't so support Mayor Menace for this. So I concur with you. I would ask one extra piece of latitude from the council. It seems unlikely, but I have on occasion for some of these assignments that people are somewhat loathe to take, somebody at the last minute with their hand forward. If somebody we know and trust, what's their name, for this at the last minute, I'd love to have your latitude to consider that rather than be forced to ignore it. Councilmember Ford?
So are you referring to the Airport Land Use Commission, the one that currently has?
Yes.
Yeah, if I suppose if the nomination comes forward at the last minute and you do meet on Thursday, I would be happy with you exercising your judgment about casting, casting the city's vote. That's fine with me.
I, I think it unlikely, but I've seen it happen once or twice and I wouldn't want to be in the position of saying no to somebody that finally decides to help us with a position we'd like to see filled. So, all right. Well, I thank you for that. So I think for this one, we've had a public comment, we've had our discussion and the action was simply to give me direction for voting for Thursday night. So I believe we are set to go. Councilmember Moore, you had a comment?
No, I was just gonna also support your judgment on the city select committee if someone should come forward on that meeting. But just for this one issue.
Duly noted and completely fair. Thank you. All right. So this takes us to the last item on our regular agenda tonight, which is item C. And this is scheduling February 22nd, 2022, regular city council meeting to begin at 7:30 PM. And I will look to staff to inform us on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. So at the upcoming regularly scheduled city council meeting, February 22nd, the the proposal here is that our regular meeting starts at 7:30 instead of the regularly scheduled 6:00 PM. So as you all know, in our city council rules, our regularly scheduled meeting is 6:00 PM. If, if we want to change it from that date and time, we have to, we have to by majority motion or majority vote, basically approve it a new time for this one meeting. And before this, so the reason why, of course, it's in the, it's in the packet, but the reason why is at 5:30, there's a special joint meeting with the Planning Commission on the housing element update. And so that joint meeting is scheduled to run from 5:30 to somewhere probably just short of 7:30. And then the idea is that, to, you know, to give enough time for hopefully a full conversation around that. And then, and then start our meeting, the regular meeting at 7:30. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Then I'll look to the council, see if you have any questions about this. Councilmember Roy, I see your hands raised. Is that, is that an older hand raise?
Yes, they're all older hands at this point.
I hear what you're saying. All right. So without any questions, then we'll open again, just checking to make sure to see if we have any public comments tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. There are no public comment.
Well, I'll bring it back for discussion then. I will ask if possible for our initial meeting, our joint meeting. I'm not sure if we need the full two hours, but if we can carve out about a 10, 15-minute break in between, I think that would well serve my colleagues and myself on the council. I'll put that little notion in staff's head. We'll see what we can do. If we have work to do, if we have to go longer, that's what we'll do. But that might be helpful. I hate to take a break very early in the regular council meeting if we can avoid it. So thank you for that. Let's see. So I believe I need to hear a motion for this.
I'll move that we scheduled the February 22nd regular city council meeting to begin at 7:30 PM.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks, and I'll be looking for a second.
I'll second that.
I was afraid nobody was going to jump in for a second. Thank you, Councilmember Ford for our second. All right, we have a motion in a second for this. If I could ask the city clerk for one more roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. Very good. Well, that concludes our regular agenda. And now this moves us to the city manager's report. So I'll look to city manager Obit to get us up to date and what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So just a quick reminder that COVID testing is still occurring at the corner of 116 and Old Redwood Highway there across from Pete's Coffee and the Park and Ride Lot. It's Tuesdays and Wednesdays, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Appointments are highly recommended. The Safe Team, which is our mobile mental health crisis response team. So they've been doing seven days a week, 12 hours a day. We are looking at expanding to 18 hours a day towards the end of February. So hopefully that will go smoothly. Pedal and People Services has already hired the crew and they're just getting trained up right now. So we're expecting probably not the week of, probably not Valentine's Day week, but maybe the week after. They might start an 18-hour shift. So we're continuing to grow it and we're well on our way to 24/7 coverage eventually. But 18 hours gets us most of the way there. Also, just to let people know if they don't already know that there is utility payment assistance, assistance for water and sewer customers. And this is particularly for low-income household. There's a low-income household water assistance program. And the, there's another program that's opening up here shortly for utility assistance. And all this stuff is on the, you know, it's not, it's, there's too many links to describe verbally, but this is all going to get posted under city news, city manager update in case anybody wants to find the links to any of this stuff. But it's basically state assistance for, for those people and also renters and landlords that have been impacted by COVID. The state is still providing financial assistance for renting utilities. So there's phone numbers and websites for that as well. Again, it's all on the update that's going to be posted to the website. West Side Project. So that project continues to move forward and the pathway is continuing to take shape on West School Street over the hill between the tunnel and West Vera. And it's been still too cold to really get into the road reconstruction, but right now we're tentatively scheduled for, if the way to progress for March, start on the road reconstruction part of that project. We find in science, those are looking like they're going to be by mid-March essentially complete with the structures up. You may have seen them starting to pop up around the trailheads in downtown. There's one here by City Hall. The structures are up and the signage is, the signs are being printed right now. So those should get installed soon. Minus the interpretive panels, which is the thing that we all talked about several months ago. That's still kind of churning through its various iterations and it'll eventually get done. But it's gonna, it's gonna lag the sign installation. So the signs will get installed with most of the other informational, you know, signage on it. But then the wayfinding, or not the wayfinding, the interpretive signs will lag by a couple of months. And housing element, we just talked about this in the prior item, but on the 22nd, the council and planning commission is going to be holding a joint public workshop to hear input on potential housing policies, housing programs and housing opportunity sites from 5:30 to 7:30 via Zoom. And in addition to these draft policies and programs, city staff and our housing consultants will present background information, community input received so far that has informed these draft policies and proposals. So plan to attend, of course. I'll tell you all that because you're all going to be there, but for anyone that's watching this, plan to attend and provide your input if you have interest or perspective on how the city plans to meet the housing challenges faced by the community. And just one last thing on recreation. So we have summer camp registration open and we're offering camp from children ages five to 12, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Also, we have spring break camp registration open for March 20th to 24th. And space is limited for both these camps, so sign up early if you want to sign up for that. Starting together, our first session of music together classes for parents and children is on Wednesdays at 3:00 AM. We also have our movers and groovers creative dance and pre-ballet classes on Thursday afternoons. I think I mentioned that. And also more, many more camps are coming up soon, including Spanish immersion camp, children's theater camp, junior farm camp, gymnastics camp, and many more. Valentine's grams are going to be going out for the second year straight. They're going to be going out on Valentine's Day. So staff will be delivering that around Catati on the 14th with a, includes flour, cookie, cards and other goodies. I think we're basically sold out on that. And then lastly, in event updates, the Soco Market will be back. This is the market in the park that that Mercedes had started the, well, kind of, it was really in full swing last year, but started the year before with Bow and Arrow, Mercedes with Bow and Arrow. Moving. Anyway, so Soco Market will be back in La Plaza Park again this year and it's a small business market, take place monthly starting in April. And you'll see more about this as we get closer to that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and all this information will be posted on the website. More detailed information and length.
Well, thank you, Mr. Obit. I'll look to the council and Councilmember Ford, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Damon, a few questions. So you mentioned safe ramping up to 18 hours a day. I'm wondering when we'll get our first whatever periodic report on safe activities and, and calls responded to how we're doing in the city, things like that. Yeah, I want to just ask them one at a time.
Yeah, so on the safe, that, that is something we've been working with Pedal and People Services on and getting that as well as, I mean, both statistics as well as some stories, you know, about what they've, what they've been working on. Right, right now, that's all we really have is just some statistics, mostly from our CAD system when we, when we dispatch them. Or I get the statistics from them. And so we're working with them on the form of that. To your question, I, I'm hopeful that that either next meeting or the, or the March meeting, we can have an update on that.
That'd be great. I have some vague recollection when we were approving it that we talked about quarterly reports. So maybe it was just semi and I can't remember, but I'm anxious to get some important information, have more. Thanks. Oh, the other was the discussion of the market in the park reminded me that it's been almost two years that those tents had been up. And I'm wondering if you're hearing any reports on how they're doing and whether whether the city is going to have to do any, given that we haven't, you know, I think that the, it's 90 days past when the council declares the emergency over, that the tents are supposed to stay until, are they holding up well and the program doing well from the city's perspective?
Yeah, I mean, well, through the winter, the businesses have been, everything I've heard is they've been appreciative of it. When we've had new businesses move in, they've wanted to continue the use of the tents. Like, for example, in the, where Joyce Jam Restaurant moved in from the Wingman, they wanted to be the use of the tent. And so that, that's what you've seen, at least in that case, and then the cases for the other businesses downtown. They've they've wanted them. So, so for now, we're going to keep them there until the business tells us to come out. And I, I will say, you know, there has been like, there was one in front of Friar Tux originally. And, well, actually, I'm sorry. There was one in front of Chi-Gay sushi in the, not in front, in the back.
In the parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize. That was completely confusing, but there was that tent and they decided after they used it for a while that it really wasn't working for their operations. And so they's contacted us and we just pulled it down and moved it. So we, we are working interactively with the businesses. If they, for whatever reason, decide they don't want it anymore, we'll pull it down. But for the most part, they've wanted to continue having them there.
Great. Well, I've appreciated them. I think I've eaten in all of them. So. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Anybody else? Any questions for the city manager's report? Not seeing anything. Okay. I was thinking Councilman Ford, because I have the same question regarding the Safe Team. I'd be looking forward to seeing some regular updates. And I like the idea of having, if possible, some stories to flesh out the simple statistics, but even statistics would be good just to see what regular level of work we're getting and what sort of calls we're getting. So that, that would be helpful in either way. I did want to ask about the utility payment, the low-income utility payment assistance program. I know you're going to share that in city manager updates. I wonder if we could post that as an individual item as well on our Facebook account and then also on our Nextdoor account. It strikes me, this is the type of good program that's out there that sometimes people who could really use it just don't know about. And, you know, we put these things everywhere we can, but sometimes people miss it. And those might be good places. Maybe we pick up a person or two that could make good use of this that might not have seen it otherwise.
Yeah, that should be no problem to get that on the social media.
We'll cross our fingers and hope that does somebody some good. So thank you for that. That takes us past the city managers. We're now to city council member reports. And I'll ask you not to all rush me at once with this. And it's a Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I have a report from Health Action, which met on Friday. Health Action has been working all year, all of the last year to reimagine itself and reorganize how it's run. And so there was a vote taken on Friday to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they place Health Action out from within, out from its current structure to make it community-led so that community, leaders of community-based organizations would be sort of taking the lead on it. So that is something that it's going to, that, that passed unanimously. So that's Um, so that's something that's going, I believe, to the Board of the Supervisors very soon. And we should see a, a different structure for Health Action. They're calling it Health Action 2.0 going into the future. Uh, Health Action is using the, um, results from the portrait of Sedoma County that was just released to sort of, um, prioritize what it wants to work on. And, um, there were major disparities among different neighborhoods within Sedoma County in the Human Development Index. Human Development Index is a number that takes into account life expectancy, uh, education and, uh, salary, basically, uh, with a few other things, um, to sort of quantify the quality of life for people in different neighborhoods. And it varies from a low of 3.38 in the Roseland neighborhood to a high of, um, I believe it was like 8.65 in East Bennett Valley. Uh, so there's quite a few disparities and also compared to 2014, white and Latinx folks have, on average, their, um, HDI Human Development Index has increased. But, uh, as a group, black and Asian folks, their, their quality of life has decreased. The HDI has decreased for them. So in some ways we're going i- in the wrong direction right now. So Health Action is taking a look at trying to, um, you know, really focus in on the areas that need help based on the results of this portrait. Um, I looked up the Katari numbers and we are out of, out of 95 census tracts that were evaluated. Um, there are two census tracts that include Katari, although we're sort of mixed in with Pen Grove and Runner Park. So it's not just Katari. But we are number 68 and 69 out of 95. So sort of in the, in the bottom half, but not too far, too far down. Um, so anyway, that is my report for Health Action. As far as the ad hoc committee, we unfortunately had to cancel some of our meetings that had been planned due to the Omicron surge and the, um, county health order that we couldn't have a large gathering. Um, so, uh, hopefully we'll be able to reschedule that. Um, the next step, I, we had, we had come up with the, a, uh, action plan at the beginning of our work. And the next step that I'm, I'll be talking to Damian about soon is trying to set up meetings with each of the department heads to get their input and suggestions. Um, and then I'll be compiling all of the results from our, um, community meetings as well to share with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll look one more time to my other colleagues. Anything for this meeting? Couple of, two points from Sedoma Clean Power meeting, uh, last week. Uh, those of you who have been here a while have heard me talk about the PCIA charges, the indifference adjustment, a name I've always loved. And for those who haven't heard about this before, to keep it real short and sweet, basically this is a charge with good intention that allows PG&E to charge our people a little more for their power to make up for longstanding costs that they uh, took on years ago, expensive contracts, uh, before they knew that they would lose customers to CCA. So in concept, not a problematic idea, or at least one vaguely fair. But in practice, it has been problematic for a number of reasons. And one of it has been that when they come forward, uh, saying that they need to charge, make charges, we naturally say, okay, we'll show us the numbers. And they have held that they can't share the numbers, generally speaking, that these are private, uh, it's trade secrets, industry stuff that can't be shared. And this has been a general fight as you can imagine. It's like playing poker with somebody and then saying, oh, I won. I've got five aces, trust me, but I can't show you the cards. Uh, so good news to cut to the chase is a judge recently ruled that yes, PG&E has to show their homework to a much greater degree. And all this doesn't mean that we'll be opening their books to the competitors. It means that, uh, consultants, uh, unbiased, uh, unattached consultants will be able to see that and then work with us to give us an idea of what the numbers are in kind of a blind format. So that'll be very helpful. And hopefully we'll resume in fair charges for everybody, whether you're a CCA customer or not. So that's good news. And one last bit of news, we did have our reorganization at our last meeting and I wanted to share that the new chair for this year of Sedoma Clean Power will be Councilmember Dave King from Petaluma. Dave's been with us for some time. Uh, he's been on for a while, then he was off for a short time and came back. And interestingly enough, he was actually our vice chair a few years ago. And then through a change in the organization, had to take up another slot somewhere else and moved off before he had a chance to become chair. So we're all very pleased that he's him have this opportunity, uh, to step up this time and be chair. I've worked with, uh, Mr. King for some years and I'm very confident he'll do a very good job for everybody's interest. It's known as Clean Power. So I think it's a good thing to share. So that's my comment for tonight. And that brings us then to public comment on non-action agenda items. So these are non-action agenda items. And I'll ask our city clerk if she could check one more time to see if we have any public comments.
Mayor Landman, there will be no public comment.
All right. Thank you for that. We will just cross that one off then. And this takes us to item 14, information received after the agenda was posted. City Manager Obed?
Nothing new other than what we already spoke about.
Excellent. Thank you for that. So this brings us back to item 15, which is the announcement of a closed session. Uh, the topic is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. And this is California Government Code Section 54956.9.1D, Public versus City of Katari at all, case number 321 dash CD 02380 JT. Uh, we'll be moving to closed session and we will be back to report out if there is anything to report out. And I'll check and make sure all my colleagues have the right link for the next meeting. I'm seeing head nods. Very good. I will see you over there and everybody else. Thank you. We will see you in a bit to report out. Evening.
So with it, that takes us to item seventeen, which is adjournment. And with that, this meeting will be adjourned at seven twenty-eight. For everybody who watches this later online, thank you very much for being here and we look forward to seeing you all next time. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Councilmember Ford, without Susan here, we forgot to comment on how lovely the weather looks outside of City Hall. I gotta say that before we go.
We'll do it twice next meeting, again.
Good night.